Hi, uh.
This is a regular meeting of the public board of the town of Rilltown. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and laws of 1975, the public has been notified that the planning board will need on the May 15th, 2019, to town hall. Rilltown Planning Board notified the independent Star Legend Two River Times on November 15th, 2018. And this meeting was filed with the town's clerk at close to the town hall on November 15th, 2018. All notifications given pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, at least 48 hours prior to this meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Atkin?
Here.
Mr. Colangelo? Mr. Billups? Mr. Marseys? Mr. Bright?
Here.
Mr. Rooney? Community members now? Here. Mr. Sutcliffe?
Here.
Mr. Versen?
Here.
Please rise and salute flag. Flag to the United States of America and to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Amen. Eric, with the adjutant's.
On tonight under administrative matters, we have two vouchers. Under Old Business, we have application 2019 dash 200, Village 35, L.L.A., Block H25, Block 857, 78, 68, 69.01, 72, 79, and 81, located in the service look on redevelopment area. Then we have 2016 dash 403, which is Block 1002, Lot 75, L.L.S.A., Block 1002, Lot 75, H24 Nut Swamp Road, located in the R30 Zone, advocating a seeking amended site plan approval. Under New Business, we have application number 2018, uh, dash 104, Frank and Moyo Jr., Block 787, Lots 10, 13 through 15, located in the R10 Residential Zone on Osborne Avenue. The application is, the applicant is seeking minor subdivision.
A few, uh, amendments on resolutions this evening. This is an open meeting to the public for now agenda, or is anything in the public would like to bring before us now coming agenda this evening. Okay, uh, administrative matters. Name of vouchers, Carl.
I reviewed the vouchers for this month, for this meeting, May 15th, 2015. The only one we had do vouchers was TNN Associates. Uh, they had a, the total was 89,769.56. On pulling one voucher out for further, uh, for further investigation, it was on 326. Total for this voucher was 28,441.75. And that's, and I want to send and, uh, and Mr. Reedy to review it again before I, uh, before I sign one of them. I am signing one on the total vouchers for 61,327.81. And I'd like to, uh, pass, you're okay on that?
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Alright, that brings us to Old Business. You have to be quick on this.
Good evening, for record, Mark Foley Cashman. Thanks for having me back. Do we have?
Do we have a choice?
I think you do have a choice too. But really thank you for having me back. We have one witness this evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fidamont, engineer. Um, we'd like to introduce him after his sworn, and we will send the incidents up, um, two seconds please.
This was carried without further notice for the meeting on April 13th.
Thank you.
Just, excuse this one, but.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Fidamont, just clear your record. What hap, how do you spell your last name here? Keep your hands here. Please raise your right hands. We're supposed to be able to give the words of the truth, hold you another three seconds. And your, uh, your address, and can you give us our, your business addresses?
Sure, so I'm with planning engineering, pre-attended Kimball Drive, Ossipini, New Jersey. Okay, can you introduce yourself? I'm licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my professional license is.
And, and your.
And I'd be here to support this for any time. Can you roll this project, please? I've prepared the plans for the application. In preparation, uh, I've prepared the stone work report, as well as the entire set of plans for, uh, for this application.
Great, do you have a new, new exhibit I see to place in the public board, correct?
Yes, I'll introduce that.
And a new exhibit marked to describe it to the public board.
Just, let me just try to see very carefully. My notes reflect that the last exhibit marked last time was A14.
So.
A14?
A14 was used last time, this would be A15, I believe.
But that's. Okay, so this is, uh, exhibit A15. A15 is simply a colored version of the site plan of the last video plan, with an aerial backdrop to it. Uh, it is lacking some of the detail in the names of roads and, uh, walking through the, um, to the plant itself. So the, uh, it's actually not titled, so A15 has no title. Okay, so this application is part of the, uh.
Would it be possible to use the microphone, please?
Yes, sorry. So this plan represents the, uh, Village 35 application. This is the commercial portion of the site of the redevelopment plan. Uh, that was, uh, first, Liquors redevelopment plan. Uh, we've, uh, received a, a minor subdivision, uh, and is filed with the county. And what that did was separate the commercial tract from the residential tract. What you're seeing here is the residential, uh, is the commercial portion of the, of the tract. Uh, the site is located along Route 35 and borders Kings Lane to the south. The north arrow is basically to the left of the page. And Kings Highway East is located to the north of the site. And then what separates the residential from the commercial is an interconnect road, which we propose to be a right-of-way. The surrounding uses currently are residential to the north, commercial to the west, commercial to the south, and then the, the future residential tract to the east. Access to the site is from Route 35. Uh, we have a off-site improvements that our traffic engineer will testify to. But I'll just give you the, the general understanding of traffic, uh, flow and access points to the site. We've got Kings Highway East, the signalized intersection located at the north end of the site. At the southern end, we've got the Kings Lane intersection, and we're improving the, would have a jug handle. That remains to be signalized in the proposed condition. Once you're on Kings Lane, we have an act, uh, basically a jug handle to the southwest corner. At the southwest corner, we have a jug handle, and this would be a, uh, public access easement that we're providing on, on the property. We also have an entrance to the interconnect road on the sidewalk of Kings Lane. And then the connect road has one, two, three separate access points. One behind retail six, another one behind retail five, and another one behind building number four. To the north, our access points are off of, uh, this is a, uh, hood, uh, hoodbrook extension. And we have a, uh, a new section where we have our primary access from, from hoodbrook extension. And then that, that converts to Kings Highway East, and then that ties into the interconnect. Uh, old Kings Highway East will remain. You've got the Wells Fargo, that is also part of the redevelopment plan. Uh, that's within the redevelopment area, and we have a road that, uh, Kings Highway East that remains in that location. Internally, we've got 342,000 square feet of retail, consisting of shops, restaurants. We know there's wagons, and there's other tenants that have yet to, uh, sign up. So they're waiting for approval on this project, we call it, in, uh, signed contracts with the plans. The, the internal circulation for vehicles is such that we've got a loop road that basically parallels Route 35, and then we feed the parking lot from that loop road. There's also a connector road that connects the interconnect to the signalized intersection of Route 35. And then we have, uh, truck access for the rear of retail five from the interconnect road behind the building four, which is a theater. Uh, we have another access point on the interconnect road, as I mentioned. And that, that'll basically feed the wagons, as well as the public access, would feed wagons from the front, as I mentioned, on retail, this side from the hoodbrook. For pedestrian access.
It's pointing out from 35, where can the vehicle traffic into the complex?
So from 35, if I'm traveling north, I can enter Kings Lane, go through the jug handle, and enter. That way? I can also bypass that if I want to come in interconnect road. Unlikely, but that's another point of access. This, this will likely be the, uh, the, the first opportunity to come from Route 35 heading north. Your second opportunity is at the center of retail five. We call that the, the center boulevard of the site. And that's where the, uh, that's where the signs are located, so that's the other main entrance. And then if you continue north on Route 35, you take the jug handle, you Kings Highway East, and then you can make a right in and come in that way. So those are your main access points from 35.
So you.
Heading north.
You cannot, if you will, it looks to be from here, uh, just past the, uh, what is it, the sleep shop?
So this is, uh, this is Walt's Sleep Shop and community appliance.
Now, right past it.
Oh, right past it, so that's a one-way.
Out.
Out. So this is, this is a jug handle, and this is a one-way out, uh, at that point. So you cannot access the site from there.
And then now, uh, if you, if you miss the jug handle over here.
You miss this?
I'm sorry, at the, at the north end. Keep going. You miss that jug handle, it looks like you're not able to make the right turn of. The next one.
Twin Brooks.
Twin Brooks.
I don't know if that's signed for no right turns. Uh, that, that would be something that the traffic engineer would provide.
Okay, okay.
So that's your, that's your access from, uh, Route 35 north. If you're heading south on Route 35, you come here, take the jug handle at the Twin Brooks and get into the site, uh, up that Twin Brooks extension, and then make a right into the site. You don't take that entrance, you continue, uh, you continue and have to, uh, make a U-turn. So that, that's your main access from 35 heading south. So those are the vehicle access points around the site, the pedestrian access points. So what's important to note is that on the Route 35, uh, at the north end of the site, there's a bus stop located at, uh, Twin Brooks Out Extension. And there's another bus stop next to the, uh, existing Horizon Store. Uh, so your pedestrian circulation from 35, if you're coming from the bus stop, is to simply take the sidewalk up Twin, uh, Twin, uh, Twin Brooks Extension, and then come into the site that way. We've got sidewalks coming up the side of the road, uh, along, and then you can do what we call the, really the central hub of the site, which is, uh, retail five. From the bus stop located, the southern bus stop, uh, similarly, we have access where you would take, get off the bus and come up the public access easement. And then there's sidewalks, crosswalk at the intersection, and then your pedestrian circulation is here. And then this is a plaza area of the site located at the southern end of retail five. Uh, and so this is where we would funnel the pedestrians into the central location. Once, once you're in this area, you have the entire front of retail five as your access point. You've got access to, uh, building number three from a walkway, dedicated pedestrian walkway. Continue along building five, have access, uh, these sidewalks and walkways to building two. Building one also has a sidewalk that comes up and ties into the pedestrian network. And then we have theater as well that has, uh, the sidewalk connectivity and walkways to retail five. From retail five to the, uh, to wagons, we have an elevated walkway down the center of that parking lot for the wagons. Uh, and then all along the interconnect, which would be a right-of-way ultimately, we have sidewalks on both sides. And then along Kings Lane, there, there are sidewalks on Kings Lane as well. So we have pedestrian, uh, flow along Kings Lane.
We're not lighting.
So lighting has been provided, lighting complies with the redevelopment plan. Redevelopment ordinance, uh, cites IESNA, and comply with IESNA. We have, uh, cut-off fixtures, uh, dark sky compliant, cut-off fixtures. And the lighting complies, as I said, with IESNA. We have the, uh, basins for, for stormwater. We've got a basin, stormwater basin number one located, now this is Walt's Fargo, so it's located on a separate lot. Uh, this lot is dedicated strictly to stormwater. This portion here, the stormwater and the jug handle is within the DOT right-of-way. And then we've got another stormwater basin, uh, two actually in the front of the site, one on each side of the main entrance. And then we have stormwater basin number five, located at the southern end of the site along Kings Lane. Stormwater basin number six, located to the south of wagons. And then a stormwater basin that is located on the residential track, uh, which we would build, uh, when, when the interconnect road gets built to satisfy the drainage of the interconnect. And ultimately, uh, we, we, the stormwater basin would be shared with the residential, and that application is, is not part of this application, of course. So that's the stormwater system. Discharge of the stormwater system ties back into the NJ DOT right-of-way. So the, um, majority of the site goes back into the existing. We've submitted clients and stormwater report to them and show that you comply with the reductions and accordance with the stormwater rules and rights. There are, there's some, uh, details that we're still working out, but, uh, essentially, we're showing compliance with the reductions. And then we also have another discharge to, uh, to existing stormwater ba, uh, catch basin on Kings Lane. That's the stormwater.
So is it last evening or February? I just want to question, as for the basin that's going to be on the residential portion, is that going to be built, it's completely built out, or is it going to be phased?
This will be phased. We're showing the initial phase, and then that will be expanded by the applicant for the residential portion.
Looking at your plans, those CS 101, 0102, I see that you have the, the basin is more to the, you're looking more to the north side, and I can see where it's going to be expanded later. You will go, we'll just put that one basin in, and then once the other area gets approved, then the other basin gets cut out?
Yes, and in terms of their phasing, that's, uh, that's something that might be done early on, expanded.
Right, did you walk through, who's going to own and maintain those basins?
Yes, so Village 35 will own and maintain stormwater basin one located next to Walt's Fargo. They will not own, but will maintain from an agreement with the DOT, the stormwater basin located within the jug handle. They will own and maintain the basin number two, which is located on the north side of the main entrance on 35. They will own and operate basin three, which is located on the southern side of the main entrance. They will own and operate basin number five, which is located, uh, southern end of the site, just in which Kings Lane. They will also own and operate basin six, which is located at the southern end of the site behind wagons.
Alright, so the one basin that's going to be owned by the DOT, but maintained by National Realty, or whatever the applicant will name.
Village 35?
Yeah.
And the basin that's on the retail portion will be owned by, I'm sorry, the residential portion will be owned by the residential? Yes. With an easement, with an easement, and an agreement for shared maintenance.
And you say all of these bases are going to tie in to, uh, Route 35?
Existing stormwater system.
Yes.
This, uh, if we look at the flooding problem just to the, to the north here, at where Kings Lane and down to 35, the street runs up under the road.
And we know there's one there, obviously. As when it rains, it, um, on 35, Hurricane Lane prior to single road, it does go up there. Um, uh, my observation of that is as due to the grade, the road's not necessarily due to, and forms problem damage to the system. However, uh, as Mr. Fidamont will probably testify, I imagine, feel free to step in, their, their, um, uh, drainage system will reduce the amount of, of water, um, that gets out. So in fact, it would actually improve the problem by reducing that water that gets into the stream by extending it over a period of time versus essentially against.
That's, that's correct. And that, that is governed, that, that is based on the New Jersey Administrative Code of Rules and Regulations for Stormwater, which, uh, when you exceed one acre of disturbance or a quarter acre of impervious, it kicks you into this classification called a major development. Once you're being a major development, you're obligated to reduce the peak runoffs, uh, of the site for the 210, 100, and comply with those requirements. So there's, there's less water in peak conditions of the site. Uh, that's, that's just the sites. Anybody have any questions, uh, or run to the next stop. So we are in receipt of two letters of the engineering review and the planners' review. Uh, we've got draft responses. Uh, we're in the process of finalizing that, and we'll submit that to the professionals as soon as we're done.
Address the planning letter first?
But I'd like to address the planners' letter first.
You might have to be taking exception to that, right?
So, yes, we have, we, uh, we agree, um, with the comments, uh, except we have eight, eight individual items that are somewhat related that I'd like to discuss that we need to, uh, right, we have this readout. So I'd like to just discuss those. So those are within the planner's letter, uh, items eight C and eight D.
Could you note the date of the regulation, the second, right?
Sure, the planner's letter is dated May 2nd. So eight C states, uh, there was a prior question on the first review regarding electric vehicle stalls. Uh, we've addressed those, and now the plan shows, so here's the comment addressed. The plan shows four stalls north of retail five, so north of retail five. There's four stalls located, um, to the north of retail five. So as you come in from Kings Highway East, or from the north from Twin Brook Extension, uh, the electric vehicle station is right here. It's, it's visually apparent when you're coming into the site, uh, the way these charging stations work is they have apps, and you know where, where to drive to to get your, your, uh, instead of gasoline, you're getting your electric charge. Uh, and then there's also four electronic vehicle, uh, parking stalls, if you will, uh, in this corner here, and this is located at the southwestern corner of retail five parking. So the comment was, or is, "The applicant shall consider moving the EV charging station stalls to a more centralized location in order to provide better access for patrons with electric vehicles." We, as I mentioned, you have an app to come in, you're probably driving along 35, and you come in here and you get your electric. Uh, really to have, this is, this is an excellent location, and this was thought out when we laid out these electric charging stations. So we feel that's a very appropriate location, as well as the other charging station, which if you're heading north, uh, your, your app would, would guide you into the site. And then this is very visible from, from this major, uh, connection point within the site. So our, our response to that is that vehicle charging stations are appropriately located as shown on the current plans, as they are visible from the main access point of the shopping center for customer convenience. And strategically located near the underground electrical distribution network as well. So we have underground electric, so it's convenient to get, uh, and efficient to get the connections of the electric at those locations.
Are they trying to buy a separate business that goes to, to charge cards and, and, uh, separate company that runs those electric?
It, yes, it is, it's like a, a separate tent.
And I just want to clarify, I, I would request you all as considered, and your response satisfied?
I, I wanted, I wanted to, like, you know, did consider it, and, uh, I, I didn't want to read that, just, I'm, I'm addressed.
People are charging their vehicles in a situation like this, do they stay with their vehicle?
They may.
Or is it, is it about an hour, they may go shopping, but?
They, they may take a nap, and it depends on the charging stations now. They're, they're making them so that you can get higher zap for less time. Uh, and that's ultimately the goal, is to minimize the amount of time it takes to get a whole truck.
Once it's in your car, doesn't it lock automatically until it's done?
I'm not sure.
Because otherwise somebody could just pull it out.
No, I mean, I've seen people, um, sleeping in their cars and just, just taking a nap, or, you know, on their iPhones, et cetera. Or, you know, would do the likes for them to, um, to shop at the site as well, if that makes sense. But it is located in the, within the parking lot of, uh, basically retail spots, at the northern and southern end, essentially located. of basically retail spots, either northern and southern, and centrally located. So that was one point that I wanted to address. The other one is 8D, 8D regarding building seven and loading. So, the comment was, the applicant shall provide testimony for building seven, which shall take place at off-peak hours. This shall be a condition of approval. So building seven, which is located to the north of Woodland Ave, jug handle, or civilized intersection, that retail, we know that that's going to be an office retail type use. Generally, we don't have a signed contract, but we, so, we have loading that's located in the front of the store, and that's shown on the site plan. So, the question is, we're not going to see a lot of deliveries at this particular, for this particular use. So our response for 8D was building seven deliveries, other than two axle vehicles, such as FedEx and office supplies, that will take place during off-peak hours. The applicant agrees that this would be a condition of approval. So if there's any other, if there's a FedEx truck that needs to drop off a package at the office, that's okay during office hours. Any other types of deliveries, more than two axle vehicles, we would look to restrict that.
So they have their little parking lot, and in terms of 35?
Yes, they do. So the other, comments, any comments on that? Questions? So the next one is 11D3, DIIII. And that comment is regarding, the comment is, the applicant shall provide additional links, pedestrian links, to the parking area to the northeast of building four, to the northeast of building four. So, that's the north, northeast, and I guess I need some clarification from Sam. Were you looking for connectivity of this parking?
I can actually, I drew it, and I can't, I'll just get the sketch, and I can show you what I was looking for, actually, because I realized that, you know, when I was reviewing it later, I was like, if it doesn't make sense to me, I don't think it makes sense to you. So, I apologize for that. What I was really looking for, and I have drawn, so I was looking at the question for you to, since you're adding that parking, if you could link the buildings like so, and I ensured to the board, provide a linkage right here between building two and three.
Sam, we didn't see your.
Sorry. If you could provide a linkage between two and three that connects to this, you know, of course, so they're all connected by pedestrians, it's a, you know, busy night, and I was hoping that this is a very, a big success, and then some people don't get parking, and it's like easy for them to walk. That was one recommendation. And again, this was, again, having considered, would you be amenable? The other thing was, what I see when I was looking at this, you know, four spaces, if somebody wants to go, and then you walk into the steal parking, there are all these pedestrian connections. Have you considered connecting, let me show the redneck horizontally across?
So we have looked at that, so let me take one, each one separately. So, this one is a little bit different, so the connectivity that's being requested here, saying you can have this back, I understand. So my understanding in reading that was, we were talking about more easily, so I was looking in this area. I did agree that, you know, you could put a couple of crosswalks in here if necessary. But this walkway here, you're referring to get the folks that are at the electric charging station and provide a dedicated walkway for that. The electric vehicle parking really looks different than any other parking in a parking lot. If you've seen these, they're just parking stalls, and they're usually located in their head-on stalls next to a landscaped island, because there's all kinds of electric equipment that's associated with that. We can talk about that 100%, but our initial reaction was, we didn't want to introduce additional walkways just to empty out into parking fields. We felt that the pedestrian connectivity is provided throughout the site, from, as I mentioned earlier, from retail to really the central hub. If you go retail five, is the central hub. And so, when you look at, let's take the other sample, example that she asked, between two and three, and providing a walkway in that direction. That walkway is parallel to the walkway that we already have in front of retail five. So we would expect that, you know, if you park your car, you're going to this restaurant. If you park your car to the south of two, you're going to go to that retail restaurant. And if you wanted to go from one pad to the other, you take the walkway, go to retail five, and this is, you know, the experience, the pedestrian experience that we're looking to create a nice fiber walkway along the front of retail five. So that would be the access. If you go from two to three, come up to retail five, and use that existing, use that proposed walkway in front of retail. So we have two different approaches.
So would you consider looking into providing additional, or you're saying that it's not part of that?
We feel like it's a safety concern. The more walkways that you're introducing in the middle of a parking field, the more likely you're introducing safety concerns. So we have an elevated walkway with a landscape on both sides that's already provided, and the use of retail five as a central corridor and hub to get the connectivity, you know, we don't feel that that's truly a benefit. In fact, it's probably a safety concern more than anything.
Parking lot is a bit safety concern, period, because if you're walking from the far end of the parking lot, you don't, well, no, no, I'm going to look at it. If you're someone coming backside, et cetera, as pedestrians, you're cutting through parking lots, and it's the same as through down your midway between building two and three. You're just out there in the parking lot, pedestrian. In fact, that's what I mean, generally, just large parking lots are safety concerned. And I have to agree, I'm not sure there's any way to mitigate that. Although, of course.
Right, so, right. So we feel we have the solution. We're trying to encourage pedestrians to use retail five as their core, to just increase the vibrance of the center. So having said that, there was another comment about these electronic vehicles here and getting direct access. Well, we have, we have a sidewalk, so if they're going to come down to the sidewalk, and they come up to the plaza, so this is the electronic vehicle station at the southern end of retail five.
Which comment in the letter is the reference?
This is all 11D3.
My, my, the whole idea that I correct that comment, and I'm just giving suggestions for a certain reason, like Mr. Chairman said, you know, is there any way you can mitigate a steal parking, and if you can have, yes, I accept, there's a marked change from prior iterations that you are including pedestrian connections. Excuse me, I was just wondering if it's possible, or if you have an ability to introduce a few more that, you know, and these were suggestions I gave when I was looking at the plan, where I thought you could do, like, for example, if you see retail five and retail six, that connection that splits that parking area into two, but then similarly, if it's possible for you to have additional crosswalks, you know, so that is the reason for raising that comment.
Well, I can tell you, from my experience having done dozens of retail centers, large retail centers, this is a very, this is probably the, it is the most, smallest, and with the most landscaping that I've worked on in my career. So, having said that, I'm not, I hear what you're saying, we want to minimize the safety concerns, and, but again, we feel we have, having this as your main pedestrian corridor connectivity from retail to retail, or restaurant to restaurant, is more appropriate than introducing yet another walkway with...
I have a question, sir. For safety reasons, now, if you have the theater, the theater will probably be the last one to close, with the exception on holidays when the store will stay open late. Will you have to, now, say that theater closes at one o'clock, the last show. Lights will still be the same throughout the, throughout the lot, some of the lights are going to be different in one area, and they still bright throughout the lot. Say somebody's parking by right entrance and goes to a light theater, you know, and walks it. Is that safer?
Yes, the lights will be the same throughout. And you've got to remember that, even though doors are open, there's still employees that are going back to the cars and whatnot, so, the lights will be on. So the, the next, well, the same comment, but the last section of this comment was also about the sidewalks and crosswalks should be provided along all internal roadways. The point is that, as I said, identified, all internal walkways. As I explained, we have our pedestrian routes clearly defined and thought out, and to simply put walkways on both sides of all the driveways, you're encouraging just more pedestrians scattered throughout the site, and you don't feel that's necessary or appropriate. We have pedestrian connectivity from the surrounding roadways to the center core of the site, and then internally, we feel we addressed that adequately with all of the walkways that we provided and its connectivity.
In that youth road, is there sidewalks on the parking lot side?
On the parking lot side, there is for a portion of it, but again, so, you're at the bus stop, you came up the Woodland Ave jug handle, and then there's a crosswalk, and then there's a sidewalk, and then you come into the center, and then from here, you can go to all the retails. Once you're at retail five.
He's in the front. So you were expecting all pedestrian traffic to come off of the bus stops?
Well, the sidewalks, I mean, you can, you can, along with 35, we have sidewalks along our entire improved frontage, which was another comment, that we have a gap with the sidewalks in front of the Verizon, and as I testified, if you're coming off the bus, you're able to get in at the north end, if you're coming off the bus, you're able to get in at the southern end of this gap in the sidewalk. And so, you know, if and when they come before you with the site plan, that's your opportunity to get Verizon to put a sidewalk there, we don't control their property.
Do you have any other understanding, sir, assurances that there will be bus service at two bus stops?
Yes.
Same bus stopping at two places?
That's a good question, and I don't know. I would think so, yeah. It's New Jersey trend.
Yeah. Yeah, it's New Jersey, it's too expensive to go outside.
Realistically, most of your folks are shopping now, considering, you know, we've opened up many shopping centers. They will walk through the aisles shortest way, and that's the way it's usually, and I'm looking for the sidewalks all the time, unless they have a favorite character to see them, they want the shortest way, the quickest way to the store, and they are going to walk up the street. So it's responsible to the customer for the patron to take care of. But really, realistically, I know that's what they're doing.
Sure, and we understand that, but if these are two restaurants, and you just ate at one, the likelihood that you're going to walk and have another dinner at the other one is probably very slim, so that's.
You're still walking.
So that's comment 11D3, with respect to pedestrian walkways and accessibility circulation. Comment 11D4, small i, small d, four. The comment there was a continuing comment, that, so I talked about that. That's the gap in the sidewalk in front of the Verizon. So again, while we have the sidewalk along the entire frontage, it stops here and it stops there, but the likelihood is that from the bus stops, the pedestrian, that'll be your pedestrian source, as well. And if you're coming from the south, and you wanted to get to the site, you'd be, you'd be taking that same sidewalk and going up into the center. If you're coming from the north, you have other options as well. There's also sidewalks along Kings Highway east.
Comment 11F?
Comment 11F.
Is there a room within the right of way that can stop that sidewalk on the Verizon?
Is there a room within the existing 35 right?
No.
Just that part you explained, and then I also made a comment about providing a crosswalk on Kings Lane. To this another, you provided, there's another one, I can show you on this, which is the second, the second entrance, is it possible for you to, yes, you're providing along the one that's closer to 35, and there's another entrance, so one way, from where you could go across, so.
That one, I would probably say we could do, I would leave that up to the testimony traffic engineers, if that's an appropriate location for a crosswalk. I think that's a reasonable.
That you would give us?
It is. That's the last sentence. Additionally, along King's, the crosswalk shall be properly designated sidewalk, who has seen pedestrians, and so I would continue comments, because they've provided it in other places, and it was more for that particular section, I was just wondering if you knew it.
So to that one there.
Subject to traffic engineer testimony.
At this point, then, the applicant is agreeable, as long as the engineer, the traffic engineer have a crosswalk across Kings, and in terms of Verizon, you don't have sufficient authority to do it on that out course.
Correct. So jumping to 11F. 11F is regarding the furnishings in the closet area. 11F states, the applicant has added benches in the proposed closet area around a circular area, appears to be a fountain. The applicant shall test, provide testimony clarifying what the proposed circular area is to be used for, and provide details of same. So our comment is that the circular area will be a fountain, an architectural feature, or an art feature. That's the intent. Don't believe they finalized what exactly they want to put, maybe a statue of the founding father of Middleton. Don't, we'll, but it is, it will be a feature, that's the point. 11F, 11, I'm sorry. Can we jump further into the document nine, which is miscellaneous, so it's relabeled again, but nine, so the number can restart. And that is on A, miscellaneous presentation. again, but nine, so the number restarted, and that is on A, miscellaneous, quotation, don't have the original.
So, so the last two of me, the next of the comments you have me, yes.
Yes, twenty-one, big twenty-one.
Nine A, B, and C. Nine, under miscellaneous.
B, thirty-three, thirty-four. Twenty-one, oh, sorry.
So nine A, testimony was provided for wagons on April seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Testimony shall be provided for the remainder of the site. This is with respect to operations, hours of operation and proposed development. Our response is that we will comply with redevelopment ordinance and applicable ordinances regarding hours of operation. It's still, we don't have all the tenants, we're not, but whatever the ordinance states, we will comply with that. That's our response at this point, given where we're at.
Just a clarification, so on, is there ordinance in town or within the development, sorry, the redevelopment ordinance which would restrict hours?
I don't believe we have, we don't have, and I wouldn't, because that's more of a basic policy, I don't even have that in the contract, so I don't believe they do.
So in general, right now, the township would allow, throughout the town, twenty-four hour operation, food storage, gas station, blah, blah, whatever. And so, there's no restriction in place now, there's nothing, redevelopment plan would impose a restriction? Or I'm saying you'll comply with the plan and the ordinance in place?
Yes, correct. So if that's acceptable, the board move on to nine B. Testimony was provided for wagons, and this is regarding deliveries in typical days of the week in which deliveries are made. So testimony was provided for wagons on April seventeenth, testimony shall be provided for the remainder of the site. Again, just the same response in terms of we will comply with redevelopment ordinance and all applicable ordinances regarding hours of deliveries. Do we have restrictions on that?
I don't believe they do.
Can we recap, what was the, what was agreed to for the wagons? I can go back and remind us.
Obviously, there are operational requirements, I don't think...
I believe that's correct.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I believe, witnesses, I believe, witnesses have testified that their hours of operation is, I think, six or seven AM to midnight, I'm on mistake, it's...
But they can work through the night, correct? If they're filling shelves at night?
Yes.
What we can confirm?
Six AM to midnight.
These are stores, open hours?
Yes.
For customers, but as Carl says, they can, there's people, but butchers in there working, whatever.
Yes. So if that's respectable to the board, again, there's no group would comply with the ordinances, that's our...
I'd like to make a comment, you testified earlier this evening that with building seven, it would just be FedEx UPS type trucks during peak hours. And then all peak hours would be ordinary.
Correct.
So would that be the making for the site as a whole, or is that...
No, that is just, that's just for that pad.
It is six to midnight, I can transfer.
But the comment that our planners made here is about hours of delivery.
Correct.
So operational hours are different than delivery hours, is there a restriction on wagons' deliveries?
They testified last time.
Wait, wait, wait. So wagons, wagons said that their typical hours was six AM to midnight, that's how, that's when they're open, or that's when they're off, so that's when they're loading shelves, or wagons' testimony may have changed. So I just want to clarify, I mean, these things are just open ended and rolled over? I don't have the benefit of the transcript, so I don't know exactly what it says, but I would ask that if you have one, send it, for the benefit of the board, the benefit of professionals, absent members, et cetera, and the public as well. So is there a restriction on delivery on the wagons? Yes or no?
I believe it was six to midnight, but we'll reconfirm that, the transcript on first blush.
I think it does have restrictions on...
I believe it applies to both equally, and Mr. Gordon will help reconfirm that to the record to next year.
All right.
But I believe it's the same.
That's what they don't say.
It appears to be the same.
And that's going to be the only restriction in the, on the site in terms of deliveries to wagons, and then one office building, retail seven, is going to have its own restriction about no large trucks during peak hours. Is that right? In twenty years from now, somebody's going to argue about this, I'm not going to be here.
We have two restaurants too, I understand, so they should, I'm assuming it delivers, right?
We're not giving it to the audience. Okay, so the, the fact that we have a shopping center, with the deliveries done, and there are no restrictions with respect to deliveries in existing ordinance, we would let that stand. Okay.
Let's go back.
With, with the exception of the two axle truck delivery at retail seven.
Wait, wait, wait. One witness at a time, guys. One witness at a time, please, one witness at a time.
So if you can't, if you don't know, say I don't know, I will straighten that later. Can a truck deliver at two o'clock in the morning to wagons?
There's no restrictions in the ordinance that don't permit that.
So that, if the testimony last time was from somebody from wagons saying that they were going to, not transfer, restricts deliveries from six AM to twelve, we have an inconsistency that we're going to have to straighten out, and we don't have to do it this moment in time, we just have to straighten that out, because otherwise we've got different things on the record, which will minimize people calling up and complaining, there's a wagons and a truck at two o'clock. I'll leave it up to your turn.
May I, may I, can I review this limited issue to clarify the record?
I don't think he can do this morning. Were you, we, did you think this morning, and this wish you know it?
Yes, yes.
Yes? On what line?
Go by Z one, Z seven.
On the seventeen, okay.
Yeah, I have.
All right, so you're still on the roof.
So just for that very area, we're just...
My name is John Rico, President of National Wagon Development Department. When it comes to hours, I believe, I'm pretty sure, testimony from wagons was that they would restrict deliveries six AM to midnight, didn't say that they would restrict their operation from six to midnight, because they have people working and unloading, but they wouldn't be having deliveries. I've been working those bars, also restricted the rest of the shopping center to deliveries from six to midnight. Your stores are closed usually by ten o'clock anyway, they're not getting deliveries at night for the most part. The restaurants, because there are some conflicts, I believe, in how deliveries circulate around the buildings, we're going to restrict to their off hours. They will get the small truck deliveries, but big truck deliveries should be restricted to their, their off hours. Most restaurants are open ten, eleven o'clock, and then operating from there, so we'll try to get them in, in the morning, or, or going to close at ten and get the deliveries.
I have a question. This way. So you, you don't know about your tenant check, correct?
No.
So this will be prior to any new tenants coming in, this will be conveyed to them through you about these restrictions.
Absolutely.
Because our, our question might be, would we have law enforcement? We're back to the twenty-four hour operation, so that would be, that could be a problem that have to come before the board.
Does he make a decision?
But that's my point, though, you would, you put that forward to them.
Yes, yes.
It would be a list. It's not, those tenants that we're speaking to, we are giving them the redevelopment ordinance. Thank you. So that was nine B. Nine C was that testimony was provided by wagons regarding the refuse collection in typical days of the week scheduled for same, we provide a testimony, however, testimony shall be provided for the remainder of the site, and again, with respect to refuse collection and typical days of the week, we will comply with redevelopment ordinance and applicable ordinances regarding refuse collection.
This kind of same question I was asking, so what does that mean?
You don't have any issues, maybe, reasons, you know, that we're all...
So was there something on the record about wagons that was going to restrict that? I'm sorry. Why go through the not as details?
Well, mine are not detailed, but I have, I took points. What they had said is deliveries...
Twice a week.
Twice. Twice a week for the refuse collection, and then a self-contained unit, is what my notes say. Self-contained unit.
Right, that's just a number per week, but are there restrictions on hours?
We, the, it's a...
Because that's what we're talking about, the comment is about hours and typical days, so I'm going to be a lot concerned whether they collect once or three times a week, but is it on the hours? Though restrictions within the current ordinance or within the redevelopment plan, this is just something that happened as perhaps a condition of approval for wagons, there was no requirement imposed or discussed or agreed to in terms of hours on reference. If there was, I'd just straighten that.
I don't think there was. Twice, twice per week was the approximation of the warning restrictions on hours.
So it's the applicant's position basically that there's no restriction. I mean, I'm not saying there, not just, the applicant's saying there was any restrictions, we won't care, we're not, we're not imposing.
So that, that concludes the comments on the last letter. Now we'd like to go to the next letter.
Means everything that you did not touch on, you agree with the plan?
Yes.
And we'll hand over the floor.
Yes. Respect to the engineer's letter. Did the letter, please? Did the letter is May eighth, twenty nineteen, from the PD and T N M Associates. In that letter, comment number eight. They not address the traffic label issues, Mr. Panoff, just the next name.
Correct. Not to belabor it, but there's numerous number eight, so you have to, a section or page or something.
It's number eight of the site requirements layout section. Section C.
Those fitting suits.
They don't have the original front name, but it's C.
E.
E two. And that comment is similar to what we were just discussing, the comment is a continuing comment that the applicant should provide testimony as to the frequency type of trucks will access the site, including deliveries in garbage collection and when those operations are planned to occur. That's a similar response to the engineer's comments, it's a similar comment. Jumping to item number fourteen. Fourteen, comment fourteen states, the site plan contains two pedestrian crossings in intersection of King's Highway East with the interconnect road and one with intersection of King's Land. The crossings have been relocated to be closer to the intersections with the residential site, testimony shall be provided. We had that with Rob, and we have discussed making some improvements to the way the striping and the crosswalks were located, we've made those improvements. Now, given that that will be a public right of way in the future, just wanted to point out that testimony, I'm not skipping over it tonight, I'm just letting you know that that testimony we provided by the traffic engineer as to compliance with ASCHEL and the T C P standards. But response number sixteen. Comment number sixteen stated, it's a continuing comment, the applicant should provide information regarding complete streets and traffic calming to ensure accessibility and site circulation of pedestrians, cyclists, as well as automobiles, testimony shall be provided. So traffic calming and crosswalks and speed tables are located throughout the site, and if we look at, for example, where the pedestrians are crossing the parking lot and crossing the front drive aisle, we have crosswalks located at, at intervals along the front of the parking field to allow for pedestrians to cross. Those, those crosswalks will be made of different material, be stamped concrete and slightly raised, so it'll be a visual as well as a texture, as well as signage along, along that order, and then similarly, we have the same crosswalks throughout the site. And so that, that is the, the commu measures, and then of course, at the speed table here, at the plaza, we have a speed table, so that's an elevated section of roadway at the plaza area. So that was an ongoing continuing comment, just wanted to find out. The rest of the comments?
If you could, I mean, just in general, I mean, the interconnect grill and other, other roads, whether internal or somewhat external, Portland had said, you're also proposing crosswalks there as well in general, right?
Yes.
So just talk about that, and how it provides pedestrian access and helps also with traffic.
Okay, so, so throughout the site, the, it, it provides traffic calming by having a visual, so if you're, if you're driving along the front drive aisle, and you've got a slightly elevated ground surface with a different texture, and then there's, there's signage to indicate that this is where pedestrians are crossing, all of those combined provide the safety and traffic calming that is expected and typical with the shopping center. And similarly, along the interconnect, the crosswalks provide the same, and then signage provides the same. There will be two crosswalks along the interconnect at the two access points, across the residential, the likelihood of residential coming across at these two locations.
Are they raised?
Slightly raised, the grounds are...
No, yes.
So there's no other traffic calming on the interconnect?
Correct.
So it would be long stretches, pretty.
I believe on the interconnect grill, it also showed symbols?
Yes.
What are they represented?
So that's a bike path symbol, it's a bike lane.
So is that aid as, now a shared access, but that's not aid in your opinion, traffic calming as well?
That, that also aids as traffic calming, yes, it's an actual stencil, every, it was every hundred and fifty feet or so along the interconnect.
I have a question, as a safety condition in shopping centers...
I have a question. As a safety condition in shopping centers, one of the bans of shopping centers is kids skating or using skateboards. And it does happen, and I hope you have some kind of sign in the background. I know bicycles are okay, but you should have restrictions on skateboards or skating in general.
Don't.
It might be something that you can consider.
We certainly would put the signs up where we believe that would be a problem.
Because that happens in shopping centers and it's safety.
Where are we working?
Any parking.
Yeah, it's just.
Very true.
What's the speed limit on the interconnect road going to be posted as?
I don't know. I will leave that up to the testimony. No, let's see. 25. Whoa, 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 whoa. Not by state law. There's no, the state law triggers a 25-foot, 25-foot speed limit based upon residential access use. Against the standard, obviously, streets with houses, you count a 25. That, I think, is only, by state law, there's only two speed limits, 50 and 25. I'm not, I think I'll leave that. So it's not more. It's 50 when there's no houses and 25 where there are houses. And whether you see that sign or not, that's the speed. This, I think, is 50. I just, just, off the top of my head. I mean, there's a lot of lawyers in the room. Anybody getting free to jump in? It's 25 and 50 by state law, it's not marked. And if not marked, you have to judge whether your residential area is 25 or not, it's 50. So if you see a 40, it hasn't been marked. If it's 30, it's got to be marked. If it's 65, it's got to be marked.
I think it'll be a town road, so the town will decide.
Well, the question was, what's the speed limit? So the question is that if it's not more, that could be a 50 mile an hour road. I'm just, I'll do state law.
Courage 50 mile an hour.
I think if it's my understanding, that there's a township or a rule that the police department puts in the speed limit.
By order.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the answer could be, it'll be determined by the town.
Yes.
Could be 25, it could be 30, 40, pick another one. But that's going to be, since it's a municipal road, it may not be something this applicant has any control over. It's something the town will have control over. And I guess the only thing really that you can ask within the site plan application is that it be posted. You can catch up with me later. I will provide it to the record. I think your tra, let me finish, please. Sorry, I think you're up. I think your traffic engineer probably testified as to what he believes the state's speed limit should be. And I think that that should be a condition of the approval, whether that be 25, 30, 40, whatever it may be. And then they agree to put those signs up, and then that would be contingent upon the township adopting ordinance for that particular speed.
Mr. Pankey will address that.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right. So, and just for further clarification, the intent is to have a 25 mile per hour speed limit. Not. I got it, but it's not your road, so we'll adjust it. But here, you're going to agree to put up a sign, whatever it needed, and then somebody's going to tell you what the number is. All right, I mean, so they'll have to sign it. If the signs aren't added, they can just add, for right now, they can just add, say, speed limit signs. And then at some point, it will be determined what that speed limit is going to be. Because you do see, even though streets are 50 or 25, even though that doesn't have to be marked, they are. Just so the public knows what the speed limits are. Even if there's going to be 25, it's not presumed. That is a side issue. Sorry for. Okay, then finally, there's a response or comment number 22, which involves, and then that's in several comments, but if I touch on 22, I touched on all the comments, 22, 23, 24. And that is where the comment is. WB67 trailer movements entering building one parking area and leaving crossover the stop bar and its oncoming lanes. So we have that as part of our submission set. We've got our truck circulation plan as well as a fire truck circulation plan. Those plans do show WB67 turning movements throughout the site. Those are the largest vehicles that are permitted on the roadway. And we typically show a WB67 through the site just, we know that trucks come in and we can't control who necessarily comes in, but should a WB67 come in and make a delivery or drive around these retail, we show that they can do so without jumping curbs or backing up. So we provide that detail.
On what set of plans? Are the plans there for Mr. Key's review letter?
Based on the plan set that Mr. Key reviewed, yes, is, shows the truck circulation where they're crossing over, say, at an intersection, crossing over a stop bar or over the center lane or driving in the opposite direction just to make their big wide turns. And that, we, if we were to accommodate WB67 throughout the site, these roadways would be huge. Every intersection would be absolutely huge. So our response to that is that the likelihood that WB67 will be making these deliveries to these out parcels, not out parcels, but retail one, two, three, is fairly low or infrequent. However, paved surface, as I indicated, can accommodate this size vehicle. For pad site deliveries, WB50 is likely what's going to take place. But I wanted to cite a few, two citations. ASHTO 2018, 7th edition, section 9.6, 0.1, 0.3 states, "The choice of an appropriate design for a specific intersection or turning movement depends on the anticipated type and size of the turning vehicles used in the intersection as well as anticipated users such as pedestrians, bicyclists, transit and freight. Where pedestrians are present, it is desirable to keep the intersection area to a minimum. However, the design may allow for an occasional large truck to turn by swinging wide and approaching on other traffic lanes without disrupting traffic significantly. Therefore, the designer should analyze the likely paths and encroachments that will result when a turn is made by large vehicle." That's the ASHTO rules and regs. They recognize that that happens. Otherwise, every intersection, especially in the shopping center, would be huge. Furthermore, the NAPOT roadway manual at great intersections, 2017, states, "Design vehicles provide similar language as ASHTO." And as an example, DOT states that a turn in traffic is almost entirely passenger cars, which that's the case in the shopping center. "It may not be cost-effective to design for large trucks, providing that an occasional large truck and turn by swinging wide and approaching on other traffic lanes without disrupting traffic significantly." Both are bibles of traffic and both recognize that those conditions will exist when designed for large trucks. So we're looking for, the comments are, there's many of them based on the various truck paths, but we just wanted to note that it is not our intention to make these intersections so wide as to then put pedestrians in jeopardy because then you don't have a safe zone anymore.
Thanks for your comments. Just not too long, we've heard some testimony about restricting deliveries to a certain window of time, off-hours essentially. Do you think that would certainly help with this condition so that it really wouldn't be the long traffic in on the site during the larger size deliveries?
Yes, I don't, I see this as so infrequent and during hours where customers and pedestrians are not on the site.
And I was suggesting, perhaps when Mr. Pankey testified, he could add to this testimony a bit with his experience.
So that, Mr. Key's comments on page eight of his report under whatever section that is, 22, 23, 24, 25?
There are numerous comments.
Plus others?
Plus others. There are some that the applicant certainly has addressed and those have been acknowledged in the letter. There are others that say continuing comment are not addressed. And so that's really what I was referring to in my commentary. So page eight, page nine. At a quick glance, I think there's those two pages.
So that concludes our comments for the engineer's letter.
Again, everything else, you agree?
I agree and work of the profession to finalize on this content. Yes.
Is there anything new clarification on Rob? That he has not made a comment or he'd like to hear a comment about?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll continue now with the letter and I'll tie all the lies. There are three, two pages, so it'll take me a few minutes to do a double check.
That's allowed to agree with Mr. Key.
That's all we have, Mr. Chen.
Any other report on any of so far, well, Mr. Key addressed things are working. You originally in the beginning, you were pushing into landscaping and then?
Hell of a push.
Yeah, well, you were asking, the landscapers, you asked about lighting and then you were going to go about landscaping.
If there are questions, Mr. Demazio would like to hear that.
Is there anything in landscaping comments by the plan and or Mr. Key?
Take exception to? No, we will comply with the redevelopment plan and comments that the engineer might have made with respect to land.
That's my understanding of the, of the being of the laws.
One of the issues that we're reading about.
Can I ask a question about your organization, Mr. Key? It's a bit boring to me. You said that it's a separate vendor or almost like another tenant is going to be operating those?
That's my understanding, but I would defer to the owner for the actual details and how he leases the areas. I'm not sure.
So my question, when Tommy cannot answer it, is are those things paid? Like when you're charging it, are you a customer and charge, they can't pay for it? Or is it kind of free because you're a shop owner?
My experience having seen this is you have a credit card and a bank.
Like a charging stations is probably the most rapid leap of all in technology right now in this country. Probably more dominant in Europe than this year in the United States and more dominant in California than this year on the east coast. Tesla's the only company right now that all pre-charging, even after moving away from the free charging. Tesla, you're going to have to pay for charging. Bevo, Elektrico, charging stations like that, all charge, full charge. Technology is such today that the cards are changing too. Now, Ali, you can charge for 45 minutes if you have the right charger. So, you know, there's all caveats to this. And I really see this business is going to quickly evolve over the next several years. And it's Ali, all the whole way and forth. Everybody starts accelerating their e-charging. And we're trying to keep up with, we put some charging stations into some more shopping centers. I'm already seeing the technologies all, because you came up, they unplugged. The big problem in California, there's bikes that are online, there are people unplugging cars, plugging their cars in right now. Tesla's the only one of a lot of vendors. We actually have to pull the button in Tesla and then unplug. This will change too over time as we get more and more charging stations. And quite honestly, we're proposing the amount of charging stations that we have in here today. It could even change over time where there'll be even more as we see the technology evolve and cars get better and there's going to be more rapid charging data. Because the goal right now for all these car companies is to get the charges to 45 minutes for full charge. And when they say full charge, it's 90%. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. So part of the comments, my question was, can somebody go and plug their car in and leave it there all day, all night? And then the answer is nobody's going to pay for it, so.
Well, you're paying for the time on the charge. And that's part of the technology right now too, where some of the companies just, as soon as you're fully charged, they stop. The timer stops. The question comes, well, can they sit there forever? Unfortunately, right now, yes, it's coming down to courtesy. And that's the challenge right now in the industry is how much courtesy people are going to give one another as you see more and more cars out there and people are charging. These charging stations today, yes, they're going to be for shop, for people in the shopping center. Doesn't prevent anyone from coming off the road, who's going to go onto their system and say, I need a charge. Where's the closest electric charging station? And pull into the shopping center and sit there for 20 minutes and get enough charge to get to Oklahoma or wherever. Hopefully, I'll see this.
I got one. So this is on page 10, C44. And what it is, it's referring to the.
Twenty-first page, 10.
Yeah, page 10, C44. This is referring to the parking lot by the Wells Barbell. It's within the 25-foot setback. And so it wasn't clear when they said they addressed the comments if they're going to reduce the parking lot to make sure that complies with the 25 feet or not. I just wanted to understand where we're going.
Yes, we, so for that one, we will revise and move the parking stall and pull it out of the setback. In fact, there was a similar comment on the planner's testimony and or review, and we read the pullout back to the setback.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Again, I was wondering if you have other questions? Anyone for the board? This witness, this testimony. Come on, you will beep it up, so.
Sir, please state your answer, it's not your last.
Time is fine, I already ate, see, it's all sort of late. My question is, the traffic, uh.
Sorry, I thought you were going to be sorry.
You want me to swear? I'm sorry, can you please reiterate? Do you swear to customers that you're not, that you're not the truth?
Yes, I do. My question is trucks on the King's Highway East, are they going to be permitted or not?
So we have signage currently. King's Highway East has a four-ton limit sign that is located at the entrance to King's Highway East off of Route 35. We are going to put a sign at the interconnect and King's Highway East to duplicate and reiterate that. A four-ton limit proceeding in the eastward direction.
My next question is for the board. What are, for the violators, what measures will be taken?
If somebody exceeds the weight limitation, they're subject to getting a ticket?
Okay, it's happening now and nothing.
Recognize that police officers probably have other things they're doing. It's the safest time in the world. I mean, if a police officer all day long cited every violation of every law, they need. So, if a police officer all day long cited every violation of every law, they need, you know, ticket books of a couple hundred a day where everybody didn't put a winder on or everybody exceeded something. To the extent that I, the answer is, if it exceeds the weight limit, you're subject to being taken.
And also, also for skating and so on, what's going to happen? I mean, you can have all the signs you want, but are you going to enforce them? That's the question.
Sir, when you see that happening now, do you notify the police?
Yes, including the mayor. And say, oh, yes, we'll take care of it. I wouldn't be asking you this question now if it was taking care of it.
No question about it. Forcing weight limitations is a difficult thing. First of all, the trucks don't stay there after you call, they generally keep on driving. So, for police officers, they have to be directly, immediately in the area to enforce that. So, it's going to be problematic on King's Highway East or any other road in the township, or quite frankly, any place in New Jersey to enforce weight limitation unless it's repeated traffic by the same violator as at life.
All you need is a blitz for about one or two weeks and the word, the word will get around to the other truck.
Yeah, but if that's a police issue, it's not really a planning issue.
This is, but these, these problems will, will come up once this is killed. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. One of them was clarification of the setback on King's Highway East with the movie theater. The movie theater originally was over here. Is it true that when movie theater was here, there was a seventy-five foot setback between movie theater and King's Highway East and now that it's moved over to the parking lot at one fifty? Is that true?
I don't recall, but the, the movie theater was moved to that side because of the concerns of just visually having the building that close to the scene car, so we're going away from that visual concern.
Yeah, I was just concerned if there was a loss of twenty-five feet of protection because if originally it was seventy-five foot setback and now it's only a fifty, because if you have lighting in the parking lot and that's not closer to the border, it's just one...
After further thought, that that was always a fifty-foot landscape buffer along the scene car.
Did they make it seventy-five, no, don't they?
No, it was always fifty foot and they were always in compliance with that. It was by ordinance, the county ordinance, it's a fifty foot. By the Rebacon, I don't recall if it's in the Rebacon plan. It is, right? It's a fifty foot requirement. So, what they did is they moved the building away from that and, but they're always within compliance.
What about the lighting?
And the light, the lighting in that either scenario is unchanged because you have the fifty-foot buffer and then you had a light with zero cutoff. Whether it's a parking lot or the back of the building, it's the back of the building had a drive aisle in the back as well.
So, the lighting, I mean, I don't have the lighting plans here, I know it's in the handle somewhere, but is the light somewhere in the middle or is it over here where it could project over here?
So, the lights are around the perimeter and they have cutoff shields, so know that the light is facing the parking lot and that's, that was one of the requirements as part of the redevelopment plan is to have dark sky compliant with full cutoff and that's what we provide.
So, that means no light comes through King's Highway, past King's Highway, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
There was a comment by the developer at one of the prior meetings that there could possibly be a suggestion for some kind of testing of six months of a style of lighting. I'm curious what would be the difference, you know? You're in compliance with this type of lighting, why would Mr. Reiner suggest that if the lighting you had wasn't as adequate? I'm just confused by it. So, if you apply, you know, I'm just, my concern is that the lighting stayed within the area and doesn't project out and there was a couple of comments on it and...
Well, you should ask Mr. Reiner, he's available, but we, again, they, they make fixtures without cutoffs and so perhaps there was a clarification that he wanted the full cutoffs, which we'll provide, so there's no light that will pass behind, behind the fixture, it's passing in one direction.
So, just a clarification on seventy-five, fifty foot. The requirement of redevelopment on a seventy-five foot setback, the landscape was always fifty foot, so, so that's the difference between seventy-five that you had, that you had mentioned versus fifty foot. The requirement for the building is always seventy-five foot, the requirement for the landscape is always fifty. So, regarding the lighting, as indicated, it has full cutoff and that's, that was an agreement to try to prevent and ensure that lighting didn't go off site. I had made a suggestion as consideration that other case values have used in the past to ensure, you know, if there's an issue. But with full cutoff, it should not be an issue. So, there, it all applies with the regulations and redevelopment.
My next question is, there was a lot of discussion about the project being walkable and bikeable to look at this address this evening and someone brought up a question earlier and I just want to continue on that question. If the, the bike lanes were kind of mentioned at a prior meeting, there was a comment that there was no bike lanes, I think, unless I'm mistaken. And then tonight, it was, there was a comment that there was signage that could be a bike lane, but nobody mentioned that it really was a bike lane. And I'm not sure, can somebody clarify that? Is there really going to be bike lanes in the neighborhood road? And let me just finish. If the road is dedicated to the town, can the town dictate if there is a bike lane? Does it, they said something, the township can decide?
Other question is in Arabic. I can tell you that we, after hearing the feedback of the community, there were, the biking stencils were placed in the roadway and that was done in accordance with the MDTCD standards, which, which, you know, again, has an outgrowth of the feedback, so that was placed on the roadway. And so, any further details or questions regarding the applicability on a, on a right way would be answered by a traffic engineer who, by testimony after me. Would the municipal traffic control power decree or modify bike lanes?
Okay, okay. And who would be in charge of the maintenance of the sidewalks and the trees on the坎道 road? If the road is dedicated to the town, so just the asphalt or is it the sidewalks, is it the trees? If you have one developer doing most of the trees, one doing the other, is it maintained the same at the same time, same kind of rock, maintaining consistent?
If I, if I, I understand this theory, I think, you know, with residential properties, right, you clear off the snow on the sidewalk, you maintain the trees that are on the sidewalk. I would imagine it would probably be the same thing for this. So, the residential portion, it would be the homeowners association for that and for the commission, whoever's maintaining their landscaping will maintain that.
So, is this, they're required to put in the same exact trees on each side and one could put in theirs a year or six months before the other? And they're both similar trees or the same exact tree?
It, it, it happens, I think there's a phase, it's kind of a counter, I think there's a phase is planned for landscaping.
Yes, if I can jump in, the, the interconnect road, we built with the trees on both sides at the same time.
Okay, so whoever puts in the interconnect road will put in all the trees for both sides?
Both sides.
Okay, and the sidewalks for both sides?
Yes.
Okay. I missed it, but did you mention that there was a crosswalk from the Walt's Sweep Shop over to the Wegmans? So, if any employees there wanted to go eat or shop somewhere, I guess, you know, it's over here?
The answer is yes, there is a crosswalk to, it's located to the left of the one?
Here?
Right there.
So, they can get up here and walk in there, so?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question is, there was something about drainage discussed earlier. I don't know how this is going to pertain, you could say that it's not applicable at all, but there was a prior meeting about the Garden Center Island where it was discussed that it was very congested underneath the island and that developer was going to mitigate that problem at some point. Is that related to how the stormwater will be addressed here? I mean, if that's still clogged and that project isn't going forward or is going forward, is that going to have any relation to what happens here with the flooding that's currently there? And like you've mentioned before, your basins will handle the flooding, but if there's already a problem under there that nobody's addressing, is it really going to be fixed?
We're improving the situation by reducing those peak runoffs. So, we're holding it on our side and leading it out over time. I'm not familiar with the details of this other developer, so I can't answer that. My, my statement is that we're improving it and reducing the peak runoff. So, we're only helping the situation.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I think I was here last meeting and I talked about, I asked about the cinema, the dotted cinema. And you do know there's only four others in the state of New Jersey and all of them egress into not residential areas. They're all in malls that have Nordstrom's, Big Fox Stores, Bridgewater Mall, Hackensack, Mall of Bloomingdale's that has Louis Vuitton stores. And in addition, the regular cinemas in our area, Mammoth Mall, it egresses into Route thirty-five and thirty-six. The Cineman and Haslett, Route thirty-five, AMC Freehold, Route thirty-three. None of them egress into a residential area.
Is there a data server question?
My question is, what will the traffic study show that you're going to do? I mean, where is this all going to go, this traffic?
That's not the issue. That would be a part of traffic experts' tech calling. At the next meeting, where traffic experts will testify.
And what will be, will be studied, all of this?
We have no way to, to be found and testify.
So, my question is, is this mall predicated on the cinema being there? I mean, is this part of it and is this, is what it's going to be?
That's also not the issue.
I'm sorry?
That's also not for this, this, this engineer.
Okay. What witness would it be for?
If the question is, is there going to be a theater that's going to be proposed now? Yes, as we're seeking approval. Let's be clear though, because if that cinema were to become a best buy or a retail or an office or any other permitted use, they could do that within this site. So, they're identifying their proposed uses, but that doesn't mean that those uses can't change. Just like any other retail, commercial center, just like...
Can it go on record? I love a lot of things about it, this whole idea, but some I don't.
Hi, Susan Penrose, twelveth Plage of York, Nazareth, Kansas. We talked a lot today about pedestrian traffic and crosswalks. I'm concerned for now with the community, Kings Landing, which is about a hundred and thirty-five units of, hundred or two hundred units in there. And I can see that our residents will start wanting to cross King's Highway East to come into this development. What is the plan for making sure that there are crosswalks so that it's safe to cross King's Highway East, which right now, it wouldn't be very safe to be crossing first, it's very dark at night, plus we have the hill that you have to come down, there are a lot of blind spots. What's going to be done to ensure that my residents crossing King's Highway East are going to be safe?
So, I can tell you that there are crosswalks across King's Highway and that the details of those crosswalks, you're absolutely right, there are safety considerations, there's line of sights, vertical geometry, horizontal geometry, that the traffic engineer can, can point out and say, you know, it beats the criteria for safe crossing, additional lights added, and, and that testimony I'll leave for the traffic engineer. Mostly internal for the site.
Okay, so then the traffic engineer will talk about potential additional lighting provided to make it safe, is that part of traffic engineers?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can you clarify for a moment, where, or where are the crosswalks proposed on King's Highway? At, at the interconnect road intersection?
So, that's here?
Correct, right there.
And so, we're up here?
Right.
So, who, who's responsible to be concerned about what's going on your interconnect road for crosswalks that were going for Kings Landing and our...
That's not really a question for Penrose.
May not, is it?
But it's not, it's not all their property, it's not connecting to their property, you don't have to build crosswalks up and down King's Highway East. But they're building, they're proposing one at the intersection of their main road across there and that's, I mean, whether that is the condition of that, the safety of the, that's where your traffic is here, the signage here is identified where it is.
Correct. So, we can ask you more questions next time?
So, I'm still thinking of coming at Kings Landing and even if we had to come down to a crosswalk, which is right here, are there going to be sidewalks on the north side of King's Highway?
Are there any there now? Are there any there now?
And beyond that. So, who, who would be concerned about, again, the safety of someone that's going to walk from Kings Landing to this crosswalk without having to walk on King's Highway East? I'm just, who?
You could bring that up as a group to the township committee.
Or me?
You could bring that up as a group to the township committee. Have there been?
Township committee.
Absolutely.
You can also put them on their own property. I mean, there's nobody stopping...
Well, we do have sidewalks above.
Along the road.
Yes, above.
I think, we're just looking, I think, at Kings Landing Road, I think the sidewalks are up till there.
Yeah.
So, they, so you put, and then along Noble Drive, so there are, from your side, there are sidewalks, so you can come down that way and then cross over.
And then it would be...
And then...
That, that's what shows on our plan, that there's a crosswalk at the interconnect. In fact, there's two of them and they, and our plans do show an existing sidewalk on the north side of King's Highway East.
Okay, so then the crosswalk would only be right here for us to come across over. That's the plan right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Moldy Dachenza. I certainly do, thank you. While we're on the subject of walking pedestrians and safety, I don't know, maybe there is one available, but is there a schematic of just the walkways?
No, they're all interrobed at the site line, so there's not a specific exhibit that just highlights.
The reason I'm asking is, I think that all of us have real fundamental questions, such as, what's the distance from the bus stop to Retail Five? How many feet is it? Well, the reason I'm asking is, last time I was here, I asked, what's the distance between Retail Five and Wegmans? And you told me it was, I think, eleven hundred feet. That's a quarter mile. So, that's why I'm asking, is there a schematic for just pedestrian walkways? I'm concerned there's not, there's not. I believe it should be.
What is the question?
The question was, how do we keep pedestrians safe? What is the distance from the bus station to Retail Five? What's the distance between Wegmans and Retail Five? This is, these are people that are...
This is, these are people that are walking through parking lots and I'm not?
So let us give you the information on those two businesses.
Approximately 800 feet from the bus stop to Retail Five. That's the northern bus stop on Route 35. And that's not, that's not as a crow flies, that's along the.
Okay. And Waitmans to Retail Five?
On the front of Waitmans to Retail Five, 450 feet.
450, it's even longer than that. Now I stand corrected. I was just curious, I've been to some more upscale malls and they have trolley systems to help, no, to help pedestrians move through bigger spaces. I'm just curious if there has been any thought of, I mean, I, I am realistic. I don't know how many people are really going to take the bus to come to this mall. We live in, our culture, we're suburban. But I think that given the size of this parking lot and given the size and length of the mall, that to possibly consider some sort of people moving system to help prevent any danger, I, I think that that would be something to consider. So on to something else. Next question I have. It seems, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like I heard because there was no ordinance for hours of operation in the redevelopment plan, that means that it's parplanch. That means that there's no ordinance? Or is this something that we can ask the township committee to make ordinance for? For hours of operation?
Remember?
Yes, yes.
And there's no ordinance anywhere.
Well, that's my question. How do we, how do we make ordinance?
We have, we have other ordinances. This is again, beyond what the board does. This is police power, which is not what the board does. We look at the zoning of, here, the zoning ordinance. But I was looking while, you know, while, while Mr. Pittman was testifying to my letter. We do have a certain ordinance of nuisance noise. So, you know, there is some sort of mechanism in place to restrict, to restrict that. Should there be noise or anything like that, then, you know, residents can complain and there would be, there is some sort of control, so to speak. But hours of operation per se, there aren't for commercial businesses. There are for like parks, skateboard parks, the San Diego Metro, all, all the ordinance. But there are other ordinances like noise, nuisance, so, you know.
I guess my question is, how do we become proactive to create an ordinance of hours for this situation? In that as restaurants, there's a cinema, there's, this is a very different complexion than just about any other mall that we have in Middletown.
You have businesses now, path markers, 24 hours, and they are not finished. I mean, law laws proposed, you know, we've got the nine, but you had a, you've got facilities that are open down the highway that are open, whatever the hours may be for that facility. Most closed, most places don't open 24 hours. But some do, some can. And the township has, most towns' ordinances don't restrict the hours of operation, or they generally restrict the hours of delivery. As Sam has said, there are state noise codes, noise, noise ordinances. It has to be quieter at night than during the day. So if those are violated, we have state statutes and we have municipal ordinances to enforce those. But in terms of activity?
The other thing too, is that this, these businesses are on a state highway. They are commercial uses, that's typically what it's sold for, for commercial uses. What the applicants, what the applicant just testified, and I'm not sure if you've heard, but they, they anticipate that typical hours, that everything is shut by 10 o'clock. So, you know, it's very rare that you will see something up the whole night or unless it's a, like Mr. Horman said, a 24-hour law.
Dunking Tums, Dunking Tums, law laws, path marks, other stores, gas stations. They're open when they're open. And that's consistent throughout the state of New Jersey without restriction. And I, I, off the top of my head, I can't think of, I know those restrictions are the challenge. And basically they say, it's a gas station, it opens 24 hours. Wasn't the gas station open 24 hours when it was open on 35? I mean, if, those are just hours of operation. If there's nobody coming, they close, they don't operate. You had two gas stations open, they were probably open 24 hours. They had a path mark, it's 24 hours. Maybe go through the list. Middletown died, it'd probably be 24 hours, or it could be, and that doesn't exist. So, you know, but no, they're not restricted, where will this shopping center?
The only thing you really see restricted are bars.
Bars, you mean?
Bars. I think liquor stores.
Yeah, even liquor stores, that is a big, selling of alcoholic beverages or, there are hours for that, I believe, as in our ordinance.
Can I just ask you, if the resident's question is, how do you propose an ordinance that you would like to done, is the answer to go to the township committee?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, you.
Sir, please state your name and address.
Ma'horah, 17, 10th Row. I did. First question. There's a number of contaminated issues on the subject of property care and non-compliant issues with D E P. Are you guys expecting to complete your investigation activities prior to your site line approval?
Not this way.
The environment, I mean, this is, to an engineer, is no idea whether or not they're completing environmental activities?
Not this way.
I think it'd embarrass them. What witnesses would?
What, what relationship is it referring to? Environment or D E P?
As you, right now, the bulk of our D E P. Still at the site lot 60, it has regulated tanks that haven't been registered. They've been known to leak?
I, I know, this board doesn't have jurisdiction. D E P has jurisdiction with the D E P, so it's, which would have protection on it. So we would have to satisfy the part of D E P on any, any violation of the spill act or?
You did, you did submit January 2019 environment impact report, correct?
Correct.
That report has no mention of contamination on the property, correct?
I don't have a proposal, but D E P has jurisdiction with the, there's no.
So we're gonna allow development to occur with contamination on property?
It would be subject to satisfaction of D E P law, this regulation.
So no construction, clearing of the site, anything can occur? Part of all satisfaction of D E P?
I understand. We have to comply with D E P regulations to the law.
Well, yeah, the site is happy, according to its current.
What's the question?
Part of November 2014 site investigation report that you submitted previously to the township, that hasn't been submitted yet to date, even though they've asked in a number of engine hearing letters. States may have weakened underground storage tanks on the site. They're stored by pesticides, hasn't been addressed. A change in use requires those to be done.
What's the question?
The question is, you have a design here that can be majorly impacted by the environment.
So what's that to D E P?
Okay, I don't think it's that simple. I, I don't think it's that simple. The board certainly has the authority to condition a site line approval upon getting the D E P permits. The board certainly has the authority to inquire rest of the budget and the current, that's why we, the board regulations, the ordinance required was the submission of an interlock environmental impact statement. So if, we live with the board, it's how much you want to do with that. But this, the board certainly has the authority to know what the condition of the site is, how it's gonna be remediated, might be a scheduling issue. There are all kinds of issues that could relate to the D E P issues on site. Yes, the D E P regulates those, the cleanups, the removals, and whatever, but they could relate to the site line. Like for example, if there are D E P contaminated areas or things that need site remediation, I don't think on this applicant's property, he's dedicating anything to the town. Except for, eh, I think some roadway. But other than that, there's no ordinance base. But, I mean, those issues could, could be significant to the town. You know? So I, I don't think it's something, quite frankly, this podcaster, that you can say, well, D E P, and this board has no say or control or where are the interests?
I think you captured it accurately.
Okay, so can we explain to the gentleman?
I don't know, the question is, this is not for this witness for sure. If the board wants additional information on our D I S, then you can answer those questions. But certainly it's not for this witness.
I, I have a question. Is there a known D E P violation on this property that you know of?
It's unreported, based on the November 2014 site investigation report previously submitted to the township. T and M has also wrote comment letters on that report previously.
Okay, but there is, I deal with this myself. Is there a D E P violation right now?
No, no, I'm right. They failed to, there are violations of spill act. They have no contamination, it's publicly known. Nobody's told in a spill number.
But there's no violation on record?
On record, no. Because again, they have a violation, they have, they have regulated underground storage tanks, haven't been reported to the state, they leak.
I don't think anybody in this room can react to something that is, there's no formality to it.
Well, then we go with historic applied pesticide use. In a change use scenario, you are required to conduct a complete pesticide evaluation. The current samples, they don't meet the criteria, they don't already show they have exceedance.
Do you have documents that you can refer to?
Sure, November, November 2014, that's.
We have documents, whatever you're referring to, we'll be happy to respond to.
You're saying it's their, the prior iteration of this plan, they submitted a report they can refer to? So you're referring to their plan?
Correct. If you have documents, you want to say that if that happened tonight, we'll be happy to respond. If the board wants additional information.
All right, I mean, can we, can we?
Wait, wait, this application goes back to 2014?
No, the investigation was conducted in 2014. By, by their consultant at the time. They submitted the report and it was commented on in September 2017. T and M engineering.
Going back, sorry. But I believe the, Ma'horah's, the accuracy, this plan, we can previously provide documentation that showed had various areas of concern. Would presume that the applicant would address any of those areas of concerns of S A S time. I mean, the board like that resubmitted as part of this current application and end application, certainly we could request it and have them provide testimony on as to whether or how. We understand it's government, we just want to make sure that they would address any, any known issues to the S A S.
Of course, can we give you a stat, so they don't?
And just to clarify, that even if, even if it is, you know, within the purview of D E P, whatever you act on any application, the plans are, at the time of reservation compliance, neither Rob nor I sign up on them until all the external approvals that comes out of D E P. As long as all those approvals are satisfied, if, you know, we don't release plans, they can't go and apply for permits until all that has been satisfied.
My point is, we should know what we're looking for. We should know so that we have on the cover of the sheet, you know, we need this, we need this, we need this, and we need that.
And so, I know some of that's true, but for an example, they've already gone for a leventer permit. They've already gone for their leventer permit. Yet they haven't satisfied, they were stored applying pesticides to the investigation. Therefore, you can't tell D E P that whether or not the leventer areas are potentially impacted. They're required to conduct the ecological evaluation as part of that if they find contamination. So you can't define a leventer area and say it's gonna be found a permit for it unless you actually conducted investigations and closed the I O Cs. So they're already retaining permits. I also just, I also have a concern because as part of all these investigation activities, they are required to do things like, they need logical evaluations, separate evaluations. If they're not done in a timely fashion, fewer portions of the process, you eliminate the ability to do those activities. So I just like to make sure that the board's keeping an eye on, you know, what procedure should be followed. Now, should I just provide a full list of documents to the board? How do you like that to go?
So, can you, you, you're in, you're in the, the area?
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, you were standing in front of me. When you're traveling down from the north, how do you get into the, the site? Only through the drug handle and Twither? That's the only?
Correct.
There is another mall on the other side, the island. I have seen people running off across these three lanes. And I presume there'd be, southbound buses would have reason to stop somewhere. Are there crosswalks and traffic control across 35?
There are, but I would prefer to the traffic engineer who did the design of the highway and complied with all of the D O T requirements. He's had extensive meetings and is very familiar with all of the rules and regulations that applies to pedestrian crosswalks. But I can assure you that the city, all those elements would be there.
Does the traffic engineer design all of these?
Yes.
Walkways and everything? You've put your crosswalk, or you put your sidewalks and everything to link up with his?
Exactly.
On your crosswalks and things in the site, you said that they're raised and the surface is different. Is it like bricks or something bumpy?
It's, it's a texture with bricks that has a little, little bit of a bumpy texture.
Does that have any impediment to shopping carts, strollers?
No, it's still ADA compliant and using apartments.
I know Waitmans will have shopping carts. Will any of the other buildings likely have shopping carts? And where do all these carts go?
I, I don't know. I don't know, but I would suspect that there's, that Waitmans, you may, you may have a little shopping carts. But I don't know the answer to that. Can't, can't.
Well, on your plan, you showed shopping cart corrals.
Right.
Throughout the, it's part of.
Correct.
Could there be shopping cart corrals anywhere different than Waitmans?
Not currently shown in any other shopping corral, shopping carts don't.
You've referred to these rules and rates and things like that several times. Are these minimum requirements or ideal requirements or?
Which rule or rate?
All of the ones you referred to.
So we, but in general, my testimonies, we need or exceed the rules and regulations required.
As things, as I've mentioned, things are changing, like electric cars and things like that. What, what of these have you exceeded rather than just the minimums? What, what of these have you exceeded rather than just the minimums?
It's a loaded question, I mean, parking, we've exceeded parking. And we've exceeded the, you know, the minimum of parking for stormwater, Mr. Brothers, there's percentages, but we're, we're not at the absolute minimum, but we're slightly above that.
And if you exceeded the parking, why did you do this? Is there a need for it, or?
Yeah, the, the tenants, depends on the tenant, so it's really tenant driven, and parking ratios on this side are, are reasonable, appropriate for shopping center of this size.
How much have you exceeded the parking requirement?
Again, when you say the parking requirements, you mean the parking requirements of redevelopment ordinance that were obligated and that were here to testify for the town? As I mentioned, there's parking requirements that tenants have that may exceed the ordinance, and so Weymans, for example, has, you know, five cars per thousand square feet, whereas the ordinance is four and a half cars per thousand square feet. So we, we exceeded that because that tenant requires a higher parking ratio. But in general, if you look at the parking required versus provided, we have 1539 spaces required and 1643 provided.
Are they overproviding in the movie theater area?
Like I just said, Weymans is one of the spots where they're overproviding.
Right, Weymans, right. I was just asking, in, in the movie theater, are they overproviding too, or?
They don't, they don't know that answer.
Are there room in, you know, what seems to have happened many times in these shopping areas is that in the town, they've overprovided the parking, then come back in a couple of years and taken out the parking and put another store in, and is there room to do that in this parking lot too?
There's, there's no intention to do that. Our intention is to build what we have for you with this application.
They have to come back before the, before, let the application set, set up something with it. Have you, to build this, have you changed the grade of any of the land?
Yes.
How much in where?
The entire site that you see there has been redeveloped, so we're regrading the limited disturbances as shown on the plans. I don't know, I'll top my head out on the acres that is, but the entire site that you see, the roadways, and internally, we're, to go to parking lots and the basin, the building, we need to modify the rates.
Have you done a lot of fill or lowered it or?
We've, we've, there's cuts and fills associated with any redevelopment or development of a project.
Are they large, like two feet or 10 feet or?
In some cases, two feet, yes, and in some cases, they're maybe up to 10 feet, I don't know, that more than that's much.
Okay. How does that change the grade, change, you know, water tables and flows and things like that, runoff?
So, three questions there. Has it changed water table? Water table is, where the water table is today, for whatever conditions, we're not, we're not making, we're not carving out 80-foot craters where we're going to, you know, dry out and modify the groundwater table, so I don't see that as a possible.
Because there seems to be some high water tables around places, like even in the circus lickers parking lot, because water runs there, days after a rain, you know, so water's coming from somewhere.
That's not coming from the water table.
Yeah, well, are these basins impervious, so what, water runs into them, stays there till it flows out through the pipes, or is there seepage through those two?
We have a combination of infiltration basins, which, which allow the water recharge, which is a criteria of the regulations in stormwater to have some recharge back into the ground, so we're not, so that we're maintaining, trying to maintain what exists in existing condition, so pre-existing to post-instruction.
So that also flows into the water table such as it is?
For the infiltrations, yes, that's encouraged by the D E P.
And then, in the large retention basin over on the other side, is, does that infiltrate into the land also?
I don't believe that's an infiltration basin. This is, it is infiltration, so it will also seep in there.
There are, that is adjacent to, you know, the residential area, existing residential area. People already over there have problems with water. Will this make it worse as you move all this water from, you know, all of these roadways and parking lots and that particular basin and then?
No, the runoff will be reduced in the pre-to-post construction condition, and there are wetlands in that area, and that is a low spot on the site, so there's a natural, eventually that turns into a, a stream and makes its way to, to the nearest tributary. So that's, that's a wet spot today, and we hope it will remain, remain wet in the future. That's, that's naturally what, what's doing today.
Well, this, this seepage from the retention basins, will add, you know, make that wetland, or especially around the homes, wetter?
There's, the wetlands intercepts, what do you say the homes, which homes are you referring to?
Well, or, you know, in carriage drive.
I, I don't see how that's possible, because the wetlands are lower than the basin, so if anything, the water, groundwater eventually daylight some streams and in wetlands, and then basins will damage, so there should be no, there will be no negative impact based on the location of that basin and the fact that it's an infiltration basin relative to the homes on the other side of the wetland.
When you say it shouldn't happen, if it does happen, then what happens?
Right, it, it's, it's.
Would you remedy Zack?
It's, it's, it doesn't make it, it's, it's like saying, you know, water's going to flow back uphill. That's quite obvious, that doesn't happen, I think we all know that, we don't have a, you know, we don't have a.
But you've got to pull it, you've got to pull it up, well.
There's, there's a low spot between our basin, down to the wetlands, and then back up to the homes on the other side.
So the basin is higher than the homes?
I don't know, the, the wetlands are between the two, and they're lower than both.
The wetlands are south of that retention basin, south east of that retention basin?
Perhaps I can make a suggestion to help solve, to solve this issue. Re-providing groundwater mounting analysis for infiltration basins, show that there would not be any impacts to groundwater elevation to adjacent ground.
That is already included in our stormwater management report, so a groundwater mounting analysis was performed, and it shows that it dissipates a certain distance away from the infiltration basin. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, please, in the venue, please, keep us informed, I say what I repeat, we're here talking about it, you know, everything. Do you swear to this one, that you're about to give to the truth, that we're not going to change this?
I just had a question about the interconnect roads and the lighting. Has anybody mentioned anything about what kind of lighting is going to be back there?
So we have, the question is, so there'll, there'll be 18-foot tall lighting fixtures, and they're pedestrian, pedestrian type, the lighting fixtures with, and then we have the detail on the plans.
It's not like a walkway plan?
Yeah, a decorative lighting fixture.
It's not a whole length system?
Yes, on both sides, yes.
And then the other question I have is, the movie theater, that one basically has liquor, right? Are you serving liquor?
Yes.
And are there any plans to put any kind of no loitering kind of signs, and young kids coming out of the theater after seeing a movie, nagging around after they've been drinking?
We have not shown no loitering.
Kids, kids are not allowed.
20-year-olds, I call them, because it's my age, but.
20-year-old or 11 or 12.
25. Yeah, still, they might want to, they're going to be living in these houses, possibly back here, they might want to walk down, that's concerned, that's why we're asking about the lighting, what if they went back behind, you know, walk the interconnect road? They're coming out of the theater, they want to have a good time, they're with their friends. Something that they want to try.
Can we ask one question based on Jerry's question? Is that okay?
Follow-up question.
Yes, follow-up question, Jerry's question. You just need to say something more, sorry, continue. Jerry asked a question about the Weymans and the parking, and your answer, Mr. Fiderman, was Weymans requires five cars per thousand square feet and normally is four and a half per thousand square feet. Is that a Weymans requirement, or is that from a manual that you have?
Five per thousand is a Weymans requirement.
So they stipulated that?
Many retailers do.
Okay, but it's not something that comes from a manual that you have, it's something that's requested by one of these giant stores, is that what you're saying?
Yes, every tenant has different needs based on their experience, and the ordinance provides for a minimum of four and a half per thousand.
Right. I just want clarification.
Anyone else? I didn't see, no one else. I don't see anyone. So we, this, we're carrying here to, to 5, is that any further notice? 6:30?
I need your parents.
We're going to start at 6:00. Yep, I'm going to take a, sorry, we close it up here, and Mr. Bransky comes up, and we're going to take the five-minute break.
Mr. Diaz?